Okay, seeing it's past the ten o'clock hour, the Board of Supervisors, the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessments and taxing districts for which said Board so acts is now meeting a regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at that assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And County Council, Gretchen, if you could lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any new employees to be introduced? Okay, seeing no new employees, council, any reportable actions from closed session?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Okay, at this point, are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action for the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number thirteen and put it under general government, if we can, please.
Okay, sure.
I think it's an important enough issue that we should be discussing that.
Okay. Any other corrections or additions?
Mr. Chair, is this a consent agenda?
Yeah.
Did I hear you? I'd like to pull for discussion items fifteen and sixteen.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other corrections? Okay, at this point, we are going to, well, he'll now hear brief reports and announcements from board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. Supervisor Finnegan, would you like to start?
Sure. Couple of meetings, I'm gonna be brief and just gloss over a few of these, give you an idea of what's going on. We'll try, anyway, okay? I was not at our last meeting because I was in Washington DC. I went back there with the National Association of Counties, all the representatives from the state associations, all the presidents and all the executive officers got together. And we had briefings with the chief of staff from the House Majority Leader, from the House Minority Leader, from the Senate Majority and Minority Leaders, as well as from the White House. And went over to the Capitol and had those meetings. And most of the distractions were on the fiscal cliff at that time, there still are. There's not a fiscal cliff, there's three of them, sort of like bouncing down and seeing how quickly you can recover without knocking yourself out. But it was a good conversation because the people we were talking with weren't just staffers, they were the ones that actually write the legislation. So we talked about that, what concerns us most is in counties, whether it's regarding transportation, whether it's regarding funding, whether it's regarding Medicaid or the Obamacare issues, or the fiscal cliff. No matter what it is, CDBG grants were on the table. These are the people that write the legislation, that their bosses, whether it be Boehner or Pelosi or whoever, that just push it forward. So it's a nice education for those people that haven't been in something like that. Then we came back to Sacramento and made ourselves available because while we were in DC, the governor put out his budget, and we did not, while we had a heads up from the governor what was gonna be in it, you never can be too sure, we weren't sure what the implications were gonna be to counties, and if we had to attend a press conference or have, go into discussions with the governor immediately. However, as you know, it turned out pretty good. It turned out well for counties. So then I came, was back in town and had some meetings in Smith River with Curry County, with Dave Itzen, and with Smith River Rancheria on common issues that we can work on aside from the airport, but much like the airport. One of those issues is Forest Service Management Coalition. Going off of what Oregon is gonna try to do to talk, unfortunately, we're in two different zones there, as we saw with the biscuit fire, but that biscuit fire also showed why there needs to be better communication and maybe co-management. And they wanna use it as an economic driver, acknowledging that the secure rural schools funding is gonna expire, that Greg Walden will probably go for a one-year extension, but there has to be some management component. The National Forest County Schools Coalition is also working on it, but this is a way, perhaps, for our region to put something forward and to tell the congressman that, look, this is something that we're willing to be the lead on and the pilot project, if you will. Went to Regional Council Rural Counties Board Meeting. While we're there, it's just getting up and running as far as the new legislative year, so reminding us of some of the issues we had in the past, especially the environmental issues, especially the agency issues. They had a changing of the guard, there's a new chair of RCRC, Kevin McCann from Mariposa County. Left that meeting to go over and have a meeting with the Senate Pro Tem, Darryl Steinberg, talked about what the agenda is gonna be for the Senate this year, rolling out not only the federal healthcare issues, but talking about the new form, perhaps 2013, of realignment, what's the next thing that's coming down the pike. And it's gonna be social services and mental health. One of his key issues is mental health, and one of my key issues is kids. And so we talked about how to collaborate with early intervention and mental health treatment for children and things like that. And he liked what I had to say and I liked what he had to say, so we look forward to a nice partnership there, at least sympathetic ear in the Pro Tem's office. Then had a meeting with the League of Cities, the League of Cities are persona non grata at the Capitol, and so we're gonna try to reach out to them to, you know, not to use them as an anchor per se to counties, but to try to find new ways to work together towards economic development, perhaps not this year, but in the coming years. They're still wanting to go to court and fight over RDA monies and don't accept the fact that we should be looking to the future about how to do that. And in fact, in talking with Steinberg on economic development, economic development is education, economic development is taking care of the kids, so you don't have to spend money on recidivism later on, providing opportunities. So, and that economic development is not just a storefront, but it's perhaps trade schools and things like that for children. So, good conversation there. Then went back to the RCRC office for the swearing-in ceremony, then had a State Association of Counties, New Executive Boards Dinner, had breakfast meeting, another tone and tenor that you guys are used to, that they aren't at the state level, is partnerships. So I had breakfast at the State Association of Counties office and invited the UCC, which is the Urban County Caucus, and also RCRC, which is the Rural County Caucus. So their officers, along with the executive officers there, and had a real good meeting on how to work together and agreed to continue on a semi-annual basis to have these meetings. Then we had a State Association of Counties Executive Board Meeting, the first one of the year, where we assigned committee chairs and committee vice chairs, and did stuff a little bit different this year, rather than just saying, okay, you're the president, so you get to assign, and you're my friend and whatnot. We really surgically and calculating went in and found who was the best person. So it wasn't necessarily by seniority. If we had a Bay Delta issue, then we had somebody on the Natural Resources with government finance. We picked somebody that's a freshman that hadn't even, had just been sworn as supervisor, but oh, by the way, Bruce McPherson from Santa Cruz used to be a senator and he was also the Secretary of State, so how do you pass up on that kind of expertise? So very calculating about, these are gonna be the issues that the Senate and the Assembly are gonna be faced with, and who would be best to help tell our story and where can we find leverage? So that's what we did, playing politics to our advantage. Then had committee orientation. We, all the chairs and vice chairs, we told them they had to be in Sacramento, and we told them, look, these are gonna be the issues. We brought in at that meeting Ana Montesantos from the Governor's Finance Director, brought in Nancy McFadden, who is the Governor's Lead Assistant, and also Diane Dooley from Social Services, Diane Cummings from the Finance and Social Services regarding realignment, and brought in the heavy hitters from across the street to say, this is what's happening and this is what's gonna be asked of you, and this is how we can partnership. There are excellent communication going on between the Governor and the counties at this point in time, as well as the legislature. And in the middle of that, I had the opportunity to go down to the 49er game and watch him whip butt on the Packers, so go Niners, we're in the Super Bowl.
Excellent. All right, Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I have been working on a few things. I was able to attend the Chamber Dinner, and there was good attendance and a nice fond for wealth to Gina Zatola. And I have been watching the crab boats, there were about thirty-five or forty of them out there this morning, so it's been glorious to see that they've had good weather for their first couple of weeks of the season, and I'm hoping that that spurs the economy a little bit. And I met with Dr. Caldwell and Dr. Duncan, Catherine Murray, Kelly Shalong, Gretchen, and the attorneys representing the city, to just have a little discussion about the hospital and what's happening in relationship to acute care and relationship to the critical access. I also, the Historical Society met, and the project at the Lighthouse is complete, but there are always loose ends to tie up at the end of one of those projects, and so the Historical Society and the county are working together to finish those. We do have a little bit of a problem, and that is that the lights for the tower are no longer made. And we were able to secure about six or seven of them, but now we have to look at an alternate type of lighting, and it's probably gonna be the LEDs that we're gonna have to figure out how to put that in the light because of the change in manufacturing of light bulbs. I had several phone calls on two items on the agenda, item twenty-nine and twenty-eight, and I'll just bring those up when we participate in that discussion later on. I attended the Coastal Commission Meeting in Pismo Beach, and am certain that they can't hold a light to us in relationship to our beaches and our access. But I was able to talk to the local director of our region, and she is willing to sit with staff and the airport in order to talk about mitigation and how it all works. So we're trying to get clarification on the front end of the process, rather than stumbling into a twelve-month de novo hearing. Also, I want to announce that the Coastal Commission is in the process of adopting a strategic plan, and comments on that plan are continuing through February twenty-second, and I would encourage our staff to take a review of what that strategic plan is calling for, and maybe at our next meeting, we could take a position on some of the strategic plan proposals as a board. The Redwood Park Association is gearing up for summer, we had an incredible season, and we're planning on extending our services into more visitor-serving activities. I've been doing some research on a Section Eight eviction for a family at Seawood, and trying to figure out what the rules are in relationship to evictions. I have been, it's been brought to my attention that there is a lawsuit being filed with Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery, and we need to get our arms around that and figure out exactly what that lawsuit is, and be proactive in that in relationship to the hatchery itself. And there'll be more to come on that as soon as I can get my hands on the actual filed suit. I want to stress the importance, we have a lobbyist in Washington, Greg Burns, who has always been supportive of different issues, but he was also very supportive, I gave him a call, I had a couple of constituents that were going back to Washington DC to witness the inauguration yesterday, and he was able, his office is in a perfect spot to overlook the Capitol, and he was able to assist two Crescent City folks into being able to participate and watch, and they had a reception there. And he was just so agreeable. When I asked him, I said, is that a possibility, and his response was, that's my job. So we have a really good advocate there in Greg Burns. And then I know that later on in the agenda, Jay is going to mention, but I want to mention that I am saddened at the fact of Harold Del Ponte's passing, and want to share that as a former supervisor, the very first day that I was elected, he gave me a phone call, and he said, I'm only going to give you one piece of advice. He said, if you're confused and you don't know what to do, vote no, because you can always take a vote no back, but you can't ever change that yes vote. And that was his advice to me, and I've always heard him in the back of my head on a difficult decision. So he will be sorely missed in our community, and he was a great supporter of Del Norte County. And that, I think, covers all of my notes unless I skip something, but.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you. Along with Supervisor Sullivan, I had an Altico meeting, we had some discussion on our priorities, which I think is pretty important. We've had some priorities out there for a long time that have been on the top of the list, that maybe funding has not been available, and maybe funding has, or the amount of funding needed has grown to such an exorbitant rate that we couldn't afford the project, so we need to go over those, and I won't go into that too much, Supervisor Sullivan, probably. We did talk about some traffic calming issues, but I'll let Supervisor Sullivan talk some about other things. Had a meeting with Ward Stover and his staff on permitting, excuse me, permitting issue for a septic system. I've talked to our staff about that, we're gonna set up a meeting with them after we hear back from water quality, get that all squared away. As Supervisor McClure stated, commercial crab season is open, they were allowed to set their pots in the Northern District on the thirteenth and pull them on the fifteenth. It seems to be going well. Had a meeting with Jim Barnes, our county engineer, on Prop eighty-four monies, and the projects that were up for approval at the North Coast Interregional Water Management Plan Meeting that I attended in Ukiah. And I'm happy to say that Big Rock Water District was successful in getting eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars for their water tank repair or replacement, so that's a good deal that comes to Del Norte County. Also, I wanna say about that, in the past, the county has not wanted to compete against, you know, a lot of these smaller entities that need money, but we had actually three projects that were in the top ten from Del Norte County this time. And because of the way they allocate these funds, they do it by region, and so they're picking a number for each region and gonna separate this money out fairly equally as they can for each region, rather than by population, that type of thing, which we would totally lose out on if it was by population, and actually, some of the other counties would even lose out worse than we would. But the way the money's allocated, now we are able to split that money up within our regions by county, and ended up with some pretty good projects, so. And we've got some projects in line now for the years coming up that will probably get funded also, so that's pretty exciting news. Also had an RCD meeting in which we did talk a little bit about the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery, and also the fish counting method that Zach Larson is using with his Itzen Project, and I was trying to find out what, if, because Fishing Game is also usually at that meeting, find out if there was some nexus or some correlation between the counting of the fish and what that would do to affect the fish hatchery, and nobody could come up with anything, so I don't know where that problem has arisen from, because I've had several phone calls on it, and I don't know, if anybody does know that, I hope they would get ahold of me and contact me and tell me what that nexus is, or what that connection is between the fish counting and the hatchery, and how that was gonna affect it. Also had a Northwest RCND meeting, which is different than the RCD, but it's the Resource Conservation and Development Meeting, it was a video conference. Our funding is probably gonna run out this fiscal year. Fishing, it is now fishing wildlife, not Fishing Game, has pulled their programming money from one of the entities that RCND has, which is the Five Counties Salmoned, and they've pulled their programming fees, which allows us to put these projects together, and then those monies go out to different counties to address sediment reduction and fish barrier removal and those types of things. Always been a very good program. And so we've been, I actually had a meeting with the Director of Fishing Game, Charlton Bonham, I think I reported that out a couple of meetings ago, to discuss that particular issue. They're working on it, hopefully we'll get resolution to that, and that's about it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. First of all, thank you Supervisor Hemmingson for moving me over to the left. I say that figuratively, not politically, thank you very much. I didn't realize that this dais is a little bit off-kilter with Supervisor Finnegan not here in the last meeting, so I'm gonna be sure to position myself center-straight, so thank you Supervisor Hemmingson for reminding me that. It's been a busy two weeks for me, most certainly. After taking my oath and ending my first supervisors' meeting January ninth, I scheduled a Wednesday, January tenth, meeting and spent the better part of three hours with the county code enforcement officer, our only county code enforcement officer, Dave Mason, and I observed what he did on a daily basis, it's dangerous work, quite honestly. We took a little visit to two blighted homes in our district and saw the trash and tires strewn about, and I observed Officer Mason doing quite a formidable job in bringing these properties into compliance. Then I got an open eye, it was a shock. This is my first visit to Union Avenue and the infamous Ruth's Compound, which you all are familiar with. Not easily shocked, but what I saw there was just acres of trash, which has actually been quite an improvement over the years, refrigerators, tires, tons of debris. Officer Mason had been nothing short of incredible over these past years with his team in cleaning up this mess that has plagued the county for years. And we took a drive on Low Divide Road up past Rowdy Creek, I saw where many Del Norte residents pushed their trash over the ridge there, up the road there, clandestinely in the middle of the night, water heaters, refrigerators, all kinds of trash pushed over the hill there, down into the ravine. Officer Mason catches many of these criminals through his due diligence and looking at the evidence, and this is great, but he also brought to my attention that we really need to do an outreach of education. It's really quite inexpensive to go over to the transfer station and bring your trash over there compared to going out in the middle of the night and dumping your trash over the hill, and gas savings alone. And I'm hoping that we bring this to the attention. During the week, I also helped a constituent move a refrigerator to the landfill, and I was happy to do that, pulled the truck over there, and we got rid of that. So we need to do a little bit more of an outreach and bringing to the attention the transfer station and how inexpensive it is to use it. So thanks to Dave Mason. Took my wife to the airport, two-thirty the next day, she was going to San Francisco, two-thirty plane didn't leave until four o'clock, and so Angie missed her plane, connection to Dallas, and we all know the problems with the airport supervisors, we really need to get mobilized on this guy, West is not doing an excellent job, and lots of people are being inconvenienced on more than a regular basis, so I hope we become a little more mobilized and take this to the next level. Thursday, County Roads had Jeff Daniels, and I met at eight o'clock at his office, and I saw firsthand what the Roads Department does in helping move us from point A to point B. Repairs, the trimming, the culvert maintenance, it's an unending job over the three-hundred-plus miles that the Roads Department takes care of in Del Norte County. I asked Jeff to drive by a couple of concern spots that constituents brought to my attention. One of them was the hill on Harold Street between Washington and Hoover, that needs to be addressed, it is problematic, something needs to be done. I've referred that to Heidi Constall in our Community Development Department to look into that. Culvert repair is a big problem, I'll bet no one here in this room knows that one of the major reasons for flooding we have here is the pesky little gophers mucking up the culverts, and that's an unending job. I thought they're kinda cute, but considering the damage they do, Mr. Daniels, you might need some help there, and I'll see what I can do to get you some more help in keeping our culverts clean, thank you. So thank you very much to Jeff and all of your twelve staff, you do an excellent job, no funds coming out of the general fund. Five-thirty, I attended a Del Norte Solid Waste Task Force Advisory Meeting chaired by Mary Wilson, Task Force Authority General Manager Kevin Hendrick, and Program Manager Ted Ward, fielded questions from the nine advisory members in attendance at the Lighthouse Inn, it was a very fruitful evening. Friday, I spoke with two constituents who expressed their concern about the extremely fast traffic that goes up and down, south and north, on Harold near Hoover. I also placed into nomination for today Johnny Jacobs as my nominee for the Planning Commission. I attended Friday night Shabbat services at Temple Beth Shalom on Jay Street with Rabbi Les Scharnberg, who comes up once a month from Arqada. And last Wednesday, I met with County Engineer Jim Barnes and Surveyor Rick, I'm sorry, I can't remember his last name, and they kinda walked me through the new bike and pedestrian lanes on Pebble Beach Drive. I definitely have some doubts about it, I had some doubts about that, how are they gonna fit two five-foot-wide bike lanes on what I perceived as a very narrow road? But Mr. Barnes and Rick walked me through this process, and we can see that there's a lot of erosion, cliff erosion is suffering severe runoff, and these improvements that we need to address this problem. And after seeing what I saw, I'm absolutely sold on the project, it's a great project. Then I found out that I can't vote on it, and I can't vote on it because I have property in that immediate area, I own a lot right on Pebble Beach Drive, so I'm sorry to say I support it, but I don't have input on it in saying.
Maybe you shouldn't say that.
Well, I just finished my training on Brown Act law, so I'm gonna be real strict on this Supervisor Finnegan, absolutely. Also took a tour with Kevin Hendrick of Solid Waste Authority Site, he conducted a tour for me at the transfer station, very efficient, clean, courteous, extremely polite staff, absolutely great. Angie and I attended Saturday night's Chamber of Commerce Dinner, wonderful dinner, again, congratulations to Walmart Manager Nick Gunella, he is an exemplary person, he's done a lot for this community, and I'm a big fan of his. The Chamber Dinner, I also learned that county icon Hector Brown was being discharged, I hope that's the case now, from St. Joseph's Hospital in Eureka, so we wish Hector Brown and a speedy recovery, and warmest wishes to his wife Eileen and family. As part of my New Year's resolution, I began my swimming program at Enders Pool, and I feel great. So I guess there's no escaping Facebook, I was not so gently I was not so gently reminded that I had a birthday last week and many of the community were kindly reminding me another candle on the birthday cake. So busy week, more to come. Oh, excuse me, also took a tour of the Sonar Fish Count. Ryan out there gave me a little looksee of what they do out there. Very efficient and I was glad to go on out there. So that's my week.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson. We had discussed, as he mentioned earlier, we need to reexamine the priorities and within the, what are the county projects that are top priorities going forward? We've got some on the list and the question of, you know, whether they stay on the list or fall further down just because of cost elements that have risen up. Additionally, new things do come up on a regular basis. So I would encourage county staff, and that's something maybe that the two of us need to meet with county staff and see if the priorities are still the same priorities and that at some point bring it back to the board also. Two items that I did bring up though is, one is the crosswalk that is on M Street or Highway 101 North. If, once you go over the hill past Spotlight Video on the right, that crosswalk pops up with no visibility at all. So we talked to Caltrans about moving that crosswalk, so we'll see if that does get moved. The other one that had been brought to my attention by some law enforcement is the stoplight on Ninth Street. They've had some issues in the past where cars have gone straight instead of curving to the left. So if you're headed up Ninth Street where Ninth and 101 meet, the suggestion was to do the arrows pointed on the lights just to let people know it's turning instead of going straight forward. So they did mention they would take that under advisement and possibly act on that. So attended my son's first basketball game for rec ball, recreation ball through the county, fifth and sixth grade basketball. The high school kids are coaching and went really smooth. John Horner's doing a great job with that program. Although I do need to put, speaking on the behalf of the other parents sitting in the stands, the school district needs to turn the heat on in the gym. It was an ice box in there. And I know they're on this savings energy thing, but that's kind of taken it to the hilt. When there's people in there, you should have the heat on. Attended Agenda Review, also attended the Chamber Annual Dinner with Supervisor McClure and Supervisor Gitlin. And one of the things that I do need to mention, Gina Setola has done a great job as the executive director of the Chamber, and I know that they're going to be sorry to see her move from that position. But it does go back to one of the goals I know the Chamber developed a long time ago was about making it a community people that we can bring our kids back to and giving them a choice. Well, Gina's the perfect example of how this community benefits when you are successful at that. So having a person that knows the community that's as competent as Gina is, has really helped in that position. So that, anyway, I thought it was worth highlighting. She did a great job with that. Got a chance to drive out and see the Smith River Gym that's coming along very nicely. If any of you get a chance to run by the school anytime during the week, it's an impressive structure. It's huge. And they're moving along nicely. I think it'll be all ready to go by summer. It's nice to see a construction project, you know, especially government funded actually move on a nice clip. So had a brief conversation with State Senator Nielsen and I know it's going to be helpful for us to have him on our side. Also, I need to reiterate and just compliment Supervisor Hemmingson. One of the reasons that Big Rock, besides all the great work that that board is doing out there, one of the reasons that they got funded, and it's an $875,000 project to replace the water storage tanks at the top of the hill, is Supervisor Hemmingson basically pushed the issue with that agency because no money had been coming to Del Norte County. And so we got funding which we were long overdue for and it's for a great project. They're going to stabilize the actual tanks on the hill and I've talked to their board about possibly doing a presentation to our board about the improvements, the before and after. But very impressive. It was the largest project funded in this area. All of the projects weren't even close to that. So it's nice to see some involvement. There is a pool of money now that's going to make some infrastructure improvements in the community. So congratulations on that. We have two projects on the waitlist also, which the waitlist means if one of these other projects doesn't get done, then one of those projects moves up the list and possibly may get done also, which includes a wastewater lift station of 665,000 that if one of those other projects in the area don't happen, then that could get funded as the first priority. At this point also, I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember Harold Del Pony. He was a former supervisor District Five and I do think he did a phenomenal job and up until the end, he was incredibly sharp and had a, was always a community-minded individual. So we wish their family well and if we could take a moment of silence to remember him. Thank you. Okay. At this point, I am going.
Thanks for doing that, Mike.
Yeah, you're welcome. At this point, I will, we are going to hear a brief report from County Administrative Officer.
To reiterate and just kind of finalize, the flags will be flown at half mast for former Supervisor Harold Del Pony through his internment. And, you know, our thoughts and prayers go out to their family. Heidi Constal is his niece and she works in our CDAD department. So our thoughts go out to her too. But you will see something on a future agenda honoring Mr. Del Pony. We've been working on a couple of different projects. I've been reporting on these for quite some time, but Supervisor McClure had indicated that the Battery Point project is virtually done. It is, there's a couple of items that need to be addressed by the contractor. They're very simple. There's a little painting that will need to be done after they do that. And I hope that here in the near future, we'll have a little PowerPoint that will kind of show some of the work that's been done and the advantages of having the lighthouse in a much better condition than it was before we started. We've been working on the Point St. George Coastal Trail Project, trying to finalize the steps in the agreement for the preparation of the environmental document as well as the coastal development permit. Our engineering department will be doing the plans and specifications for the parking lot improvements. Those should be the final steps in Phase One. There are some significant issues regarding mitigation that we still have to overcome. We're trying to do those as part of Phase Two because of the timelines. And so we will be also bringing forward some finalization on that, I would hope by probably April. We have until the end of March or end of February into March to get this completed and then work out some logistical issues with the Coastal Conservancy, who's the funding agency, and look for whatever funding may be available for the actual development of the parking lot and trail. And just generally, we've been reviewing the governor's proposed budget and preparing for our mid-year, which the board should see a mid-year report at the first meeting in February, if not second. Those two meetings are going to be very close together, so we'll have it on one or the other. Preparing the evals that are typically required at this time of the year. Dealing with miscellaneous county issues and public requests and have been pursuing funding for public safety through the governor's budget. And there's some, there's different funding that's coming down. Some of it is for cities, that's through a grant process. And then we'll be working with our advocates and the Department of Finance and anybody else that we need to work with, including President Finnegan, and trying to secure some of the funds that were reduced over the last two years. Also included, speaking with both our federal and state advocates and we'll be bringing forward a slightly revised legislative platform within the next month or two for the board to review and make any changes or additions to. And looking at also maybe traveling to discuss with federal and/or state legislators some of the issues that we know are coming down regarding SRS, the Secured Rural Schools, and funding for the road department. And our advocate has indicated that they would like to hear the voice of the rural counties because it's not necessarily heard regarding what these roads mean to these national forests. All of the national forests in Del Norte County is virtually, it's accessed by county roads. So we're charged with maintaining those roads and a lot of that picture is just not portrayed in Washington DC or even Sacramento, but primarily Washington DC. So it looks like there will be an opportunity to have those discussions and hopefully start that discussion and bring the rural counties forward a little quicker than others.
All right. Thank you. Just a reminder, it is board policy to turn your cellphones off. Don't let them ring all the way as you walk outside the door. So I may have to reiterate that in a couple of minutes. So at this point, we're going to take a timed item, 10:25, public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Mr. Miles.
Well, I have a number of concerns today and I don't know where to start. My first concern, I learned recently that my county is paying for a doctor who happens to live in Southern California. And my concern is that currently we have a public health nurse on duty that may not be supervised by somebody who has the credentials to supervise her. My next concern is I think it's very important. Not too long ago, I was reading an article in the San Francisco Chronicle and it explained how every county mental health department is required by state law to give information to a state agency about people who have mental health problems or have been involved in spousal abuse or other issues. So a state agency can provide a list to my sheriff's department, and I hope members of the National Rifle Association doesn't come after me for this, that those guns that these people may own, whom it could hurt themselves or others, be turned in. Well, I became aware that my sheriff in a number of years has not went, because the way this list comes back to the county, has not had the funds or the manpower to ask for these guns to be turned in. Well, after what happened back in Connecticut, I hope my county mental health officials are providing the state with this list and that somehow my county will provide the funds for my sheriff's department to get people who are not supposed to have these firearms and get these firearms off the street.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing no other public comment, I will close the public comment section and we'll move on to item 26, which was a timed item for 10:30.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Can I address Mr. Miles' comments during this protocol?
Well, just briefly.
Okay. I just want to bring attention, first of all, you did mention about our county health officer who does live in another county in Southern California, Dr. Martinelli, lives in Santa Barbara County. And it is problematic and this board needs to take a look at how someone can do the job effectively 800 miles away. We have water and water pipes can break and before the water can be distributed publicly, this, the water has to be deemed uncontaminated. So if someone is far away, then this needs, this board needs to address that. And thank you, Mr. Miles, for bringing it to my attention.
Okay. Moving, this is a Sutter Coast Hospital update by Dr. Greg Duncan. Mr. Duncan, if you could.
First, prior to my presentation, I'd like just to give to Dr. Caldwell.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Come up to the microphone though. So, Dr. Caldwell.
Hi, you guys. You all know me, but for the record, I'm Kevin Caldwell. And I'd like to give a brief overview history to how we got here today and the issue at hand and to make it really clear that the issue at hand is Sutter Health's relentless intrusion into this community to take away ownership and all control from our one and only rural hospital. This is, they are, despite the huge community effort so far, they are showing no signs of slowing down. And we're here to ask for your help to do even more than you've done already because it's clear that if this gets carried out, it will precipitate a public health emergency in this community and an economic collapse. And I know we are tough people here. We're independent. We can take care of ourselves and we can survive tsunamis and floods and landslides. But I don't think we're going to be able to survive this one. And I'd like to give a little bio for myself and my history here of why I think I have a great deal of standing in making these comments in this community. I've been here for 29 years now. My wife and I moved here, we're both young physicians way back then. We've been on the medical staff of the hospital this whole time and now we are the longest serving physicians on the active medical staff at the hospital. And we're the only physicians left in the community who predate Sutter Health in this community. In addition, we raised our family here. Our children all went off, got great educations. They all chose to come back here and they're all doing, they're all great Del Norters, gainfully employed, one grandchild. So I now have three generations of family living here in Del Norte. And my wife and I have run our own private business, our medical practice, for this whole time. Last year, we were awarded Business Leaders of the Year. And we've worked with all of you over the decades in so many ways of doing things to make our community a better place. Couldn't name them all, but would like to name just a couple highlights. One, the scholarship mentoring program that my wife and I started, which has been very successful and has vastly increased the number of our high school graduates who go on to four-year universities. I was also founding board member of the Wild Rivers Community Foundation and that was an instrumental group in attracting the California Endowment to our community and its multi-year, many million dollar commitment to our community. I'm also an elected member of the Del Norte Healthcare District. Been on that since 2008 and as a member, I'm party to the lawsuit against Sutter Health, which was, we were granted a temporary restraining order in July and in October, we were given a preliminary injunction to stop Sutter Health from their plan to transfer all control to a board hundreds of miles away from here. So in that, even with all that and all the other things this community has done, they are relentlessly going forward. The first thing, when we got the injunction, the first thing Sutter Health did was call the healthcare district to find out what our budget was. They clearly have no intention to deal with this community. They just want to squish us. Now, more to the point, I was chief of staff of the hospital in 2010 and 2011. And as such, that gives me a position on the hospital board, a voting position. So the key there is that when they first voted to transfer control to literally the board board to dissolve itself and transfer all of their authority to this board hundreds of miles away. So, I was there for the, for two years to the buildup of the vote, which was taken in November of 2011. And that's important, because I rarely missed a meeting, and I knew everything that anyone else did at that, on that board. And I'm convinced, no one understood the implications of their vote. Yet, they were told by the Sutter executives to vote for this, and they did. I was the only opposing vote. And I had good reason to be suspicious of them, because I'd been on that board for two years. And for those two years, the Sutter executives had repeatedly overreached their authority into, into medical staff functions. And I don't know if you know it, but in a hospital, there's two distinct groups. The hospital medical staff is, has its own set of bylaws, and they are responsible for patient care and patient protection. The administration is not allowed to reach into that side of the organization. And I think for obvious reasons. You don't want the businessmen controlling patient care. Now, this is an ancient tradition, and it's codified in California law now. But for the two years I was on the board, they repeatedly violated the medical staff bylaws. And over and over again, I had to go to the hospital board to try to get these, these things corrected, over and over again. And with a lot of fighting, I usually did get them corrected. But the only reason I could was because we had a local board. With this transfer, there will be no local board. The chief of staff will have nothing to do with the controlling board down in San Francisco. So, I, I'm saying this not as an alarmist, but as just reality and fact. If this goes through, it will be a disaster for this county. And we're hoping that, I know you guys have already done a lot to try to fight this, but we have to do more. And I think now, we'll let Dr. Duncan fill in a lot of the details.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And especially to Mr. Sullivan for accommodating my schedule so I could be here today. I have a series of nine facts that I'd like to read to the record. There's a lot of information here, and I think the best way is just to read it to you. Feel free to stop me if you have questions along the way, and this will be submitted in written form to the board for your later review. This urgent request for assistance from the Board of Supervisors is based on the following facts. One, Sutter Health executives have made numerous false statements to the hospital board, hospital employees and medical staff, and our elected officials, including this board of supervisors. Two, Sutter Health is violating the promises they made to this community when the county healthcare district granted Sutter a monopoly on hospital care. The transfer of local hospital ownership and the downsizing of the hospital by 50% to qualify for federal funds under the Critical Access Program are clearly contrary to the language in the original agreement between Sutter Health and the county healthcare district. Three, over 2,000 residents have signed a petition opposing Sutter Health. Sutter's plans are also contrary to the will of the residents who donated the property to Sutter upon which the hospital was built. Their objection is in the form of an official court declaration. This property was to be used to provide expanded medical care to the residents within the hospital's service area, which now number over 40,000. Four, Sutter Health continues to refuse to allow me unrestricted access to the hospital financial data, even though such access is the right of every member of the Board of Directors, as provided in our hospital bylaws. A former judge who used to sit on the board told our CEO to let me look at the books unrestricted, as provided in the bylaws, and the following day, I was denied. Sutter Health also ignored a subpoena issued by the healthcare district's attorneys requesting to see the hospital financial data. Five, Sutter Health is now appealing the preliminary injunction to the Court of Appeals. This injunction blocks regionalization and critical access. Six, and this is important, other hospital management firms are standing by with a strong interest in managing our hospital under a shared governance structure with guaranteed local representation and the goal of expansion, not contraction, of medical services. Seven, Sutter Health and the Sutter Coast Hospital Board continue to exclude the community, our elected officials, and the medical staff from the decision-making process on these issues, which impact every resident in our county. The Sutter Health veil of secrecy includes their recent refusal to release two prior studies on critical access designation at our hospital, which were completed in 2008 and 2012. Eight, this is about critical access. The numbers, you'll, you'll have more detail on later, but the, I did my own study on critical access, since they won't let me see theirs, but critical access designation of Sutter Coast Hospital will create a public health crisis in this county. Emergency patient transfers will increase, hospital staffing will decrease, and physicians will be more difficult to recruit and retain to our region. Under critical access designation, anytime the hospital reaches a census of 25 patients, any additional patients needing a hospital bed will be transferred by air ambulance to another hospital. In the past three and a half months, there were 55 days when Sutter Coast Hospital had 25 or more patients. This means the hospital would have been closed to new admission on those 55 days in the past three and a half months. On Christmas Day alone, five patients would have been airlifted to another hospital had we been a critical access facility. This predates flu season. This is our less busy time. Number nine, the economic impact of a downsized critical access hospital, in my opinion, will be very significant. Formal written opposition to Sutter Health's plans has been submitted by the Crescent City Chamber of Commerce, Board of Realtors, United Indian Health Services, Senior Center, and union leaders representing the California school employees and employees of California United Home Care Workers. Retirees who moved to this area with the expectation of a full-service hospital have been contacting me with concerns about the availability of medical services in the future, should Sutter Health prevail. Despite all of these actions on the part of Sutter Health, Sutter Coast Hospital continues to enjoy tax-exempt status while conducting business in Del Nord County. The medical staff of Sutter Coast Hospital have already passed unanimous resolutions opposing regionalization and critical access designation at Sutter Coast Hospital. However, our request to the hospital board and to Sutter Health, and the two letters which this board of supervisor wrote concerning regionalization, have had no measurable effect. Sutter Health is clearly proceeding with regionalization. With respect to critical access, Sutter Health has scheduled a special meeting of the hospital board to discuss the issue tonight. However, Sutter has refused to distribute the prior critical access studies or any other meeting material in advance of tonight's meeting, despite requests from myself and the hospital vice chief of staff. We therefore request your assistance in protecting local ownership and governance of our community hospital and preserving its status as a 49-bed public charity institution. We ask for your intervention because Sutter Health is poised to complete the transfer of ownership if the healthcare district's injunction is lowered. This will cause great harm to the 40,000 citizens who depend on our community hospital. Now, in closing, I have four possible means for this board to consider to oppose Sutter Health. First is to review, and if you believe appropriate, support previous and future correspondence, which local physicians have written to state oversight agencies, and there are quite a number. Second, join our city leadership with our county leadership and the healthcare district in formal legal opposition to Sutter Health. As an aside, the Curry County Commissioners have also contacted me, expressing interest in coordinating efforts with this governing body to oppose Sutter Health. Third, ask the taxing authority of Del Nord County to review Sutter Coast Hospital's tax-exempt status. This is being reviewed at the state level, and I want to thank Mr. Gitlin for doing some research this past summer, documenting the tax-exempt status and the impact on our county, which Sutter Coast Hospital has enjoyed. And we did pass that information on to elected state representatives. And finally, establish communication with other elected state representatives that this body would have contacts with. We have contacted some, but the physicians, I believe, have done what we can. We have the information, and we need additional standing on the part of our elected representatives. Thank you very much for your attention, and I am available if you do have questions.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? I do. First of all, I want to say thank you, Doctors Duncan, I'm including doctors Duncan, as I see your wife is here. Dr. Caldwell, I want to say thank you so much for what you're doing here. It's a Herculean effort. And I, I think we're all on the same page, and we want this hospital here. And I, I want to address also that the tax-exempt status has to do with property taxes that would normally be paid for this hospital. It has a $37 million assessment. We all know 1% in California, so you can do the math on what the county's share of that would be, 19 cents on the dollar. It's a sizable amount of money we could get. And then, there are two parcels. They do pay some property taxes on their second parcel, having to do with selling non-hospital gift shop items, something like that, but it's very negligible. So, again, we brought that to your attention, and that's something that should be reviewed. It's, it's, they're exempt under a welfare code, and I think it is a miscarriage. It's absolutely. Dr. Duncan, I just would like you to address our existing status, so that the public is clear that we are currently an acute care facility. And Sutter Coast and its health district, Sutter Health, I should say, is, is, is engaging in what is called regionalization to move our status to critical access care. Is that my understanding, as you understand?
They're interrelated. Regionalization will give the decision on critical access to the regional board. So, once our board dissolves, all future decisions regarding the hospital, including the size and scope of services, will be made in San Francisco with no local authority. Critical access is one of those decisions. And in essence, the requirements for a critical access hospital is to never exceed the 25-bed cap. It's important to know that the cap for non-maternity and non-pediatric patients is 22. So, in general, you don't go over 22, because you have to hold some beds to reduce the likelihood that someone will give birth on an airplane. So, you try to keep it at 22. So, the numbers I gave you underestimate the number of transfers. They significantly underestimate the number of transfers. So, the second is, the average length of stay can be no longer than four days. So, if you present to the hospital with what appears to be a more prolonged condition, you'll be sent to a different hospital rather than being admitted. There are also scope of service requirements that go away, such as having a physician on duty in the emergency room and having an intensive care unit available.
Would you also share with the board the upcoming timetable and impending court dates for all future action?
It appears that the injunction hearing and the Court of Appeals will take place soon, maybe in the next two weeks, as will the binding arbitration. The binding arbitration was insisted on by Sutter Health to occur in Sacramento. That is a stipulation of that lease agreement, the same lease agreement, they say, is dead. The problem with it is it greatly expands the cost of us fighting the lawsuit and reduces the community input when the arbitration occurs 375 miles away.
Thank you.
Any other supervisors?
Who are we having attend the arbitration meetings?
I don't know, other than our attorneys, who else will be attending those. I don't have that information. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with the healthcare district, and we will discuss it at that time, but it's not clear that there'll be very many people there.
Because it seems to me that we should either have affidavits or some kind of subpoena power to get people to come to testify or to make that request.
To come to Del Nord County?
No, even to get to arbitrations in Sacramento, just because we need to be there.
Right.
On the, the next steps, where we need to review and support the information that you've submitted, and you have given Gretchen all of that, correct?
Much of it.
Okay. So, we need to make sure we have all of that, because as a board member, I would want us to take an active role in that, in that review process, and then, take steps in talking with the legal opposition to this and see what kind of assistance that we can get. And possibly, I think that one of the biggest issues here that people may not realize is that by destroying that firewall of service between administration and patients and physicians, we are putting our community in an extremely vulnerable position, because you will be 100% driven by the executive management, rather than the medical teams that come together to review what kind of service needs to happen. And we could actually be seeing, we could lose possibly other services when that firewall is gone. And so, that's huge, in my opinion. And then, the other piece is that when they fly someone out, people need to realize the significance of that, because when they fly you to Santa Rosa or San Francisco, when they release you on a Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock, they don't make sure that you get home. You are in Santa Rosa. And like, for someone like myself that has family and means, I'll be able to get home. But I work with many families in this community that would not have the means. And I've had, in the past, I've had students that have had to be either in San Francisco with a baby or in San Francisco with a parent. And yes, they do get to take, one person gets to fly in the plane, but those folks get down there, and they're in San Francisco, and, you know, there's been many Western Union wiring to make sure that there's at least food money, because there is absolutely no support, and people are left out to, to dry, so to speak. And so, as a community, I think that this board of supervisors, the city council, that we should take all, all steps necessary, no bars held. I mean, we should go, I agree, it's a Herculean effort, and so, we should go for the Achilles. I mean, it's time for us to say, our firewall is here for our community, and we need to do everything in our capacity. And I'm hoping that we direct staff to do everything in our capacity to not let this happen. And I would also suggest, and we haven't done it, is that we do a records request to Sutter, and we ask for their fiscal records, we ask for their bylaws, we ask for their minutes and records, and we ask for non, the critical access reports that have been done in the past, and let them respond to a government agency. We don't need to do that, because we're a private nonprofit, even though we know that because they're a public charitable trust nonprofit, I believe that they're going to need to respond. So, I would suggest that we do a massive records request to them, and let them know that we're not just sitting quietly and going to wait until they do something. What would happen if people tried to attend that meeting tonight?
Well, they dismissed me from two meetings, and I'm on the board, so I don't think there's any way you'd be, you'd be allowed in the room. Three attorneys have told me that action is illegal. So, it's, it's the wanton disregard for law. When you mentioned the two columns of authority in the hospital, the patient care and the business side, and the two are, have their each unique responsibilities, that's a matter of law. And... And the California Medical Association did an assessment on the regional structure and regional bylaws, and had significant concerns that it represented a violation of existing California law, which I read to the board, but again, with no measurable effect. And I want to say one more thing about critical access with respect to air ambulance transfers, and expand upon what you said. The cost, I learned, a friend of mine had to go to just a Medford, was $41,000 last summer. And secondly, the routine transfer of patients in aircraft is to be avoided. A Klamath resident contacted me. He presented to the hospital with a perforated intestine and probably had two or three hours to live, and he was able to be treated. It's not an exaggeration to say that if we routinely transfer patients out of here on airplanes, people will die on airplanes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yeah, I don't want to prolong that, but first of all, I want to thank, you know, you and your wife, and obviously, Dr. Caldwell as well, for bringing, and we've tried to be respectful of the healthcare district, as well as the board directors of the hospital, and let this take its process. My big fear over the last six weeks, I've been articulating to all our fellow supervisors and people in the community, is that while the initial outcry was there and the education, all too often, we see the ebb and flow, and now we're lulled into complacency while the health, while Sutter Health was, you know, going full speed ahead to do what they fully intended to do. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is I appreciate you keeping us engaged, hopefully waking up that portion of the community for, you know, public outcry, but that this board is committed, through our staff, through direction of our staff, to coordinate with the city and other political entities, but if we have to take the lead, we'll take the lead. And it is, we realize it's no longer time to sit back and be polite about who's leading this discussion or the legal challenge, but we need to be more actively involved. It is critical, not just economically, but for medical reasons. And since we're the stewards of the community, it's going to land on our shoulders, and we accept it.
Thank you. Your comments are very insightful. I'll share two comments that a Sutter leader told to me and some other physicians. One was, "The emotion will die down and go away, and your work will be for naught." And the second was, "You physicians don't have the resources to fight this anyway." And that disturbed me, because he was recognizing that there was serious problems with what they were doing, and yet, we didn't have the resources, and that's why we're approaching you, and we really appreciate your help.
You got it. Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yeah, I, as, go along with the rest of the supervisors. Really appreciate your efforts. I know you've gotten above and beyond, and we really appreciate that from all of you. It is an extremely important issue, and we do need to stay on top of it, and our commitment, I think, as a board, is to do that.
Thank you. I personally want to thank you also for your due diligence and staying, persistency of all of you staying on top of this, because there are so many things that get thrown in front of the board, and the community taking in so many different directions. It's nice to know somebody's staying on top of this to keep us up to date. And I think at this point, we'll just, unless, kind of the consensus of the board, that to direct staff to help with, as Supervisor McClure had mentioned, and Supervisor Finnegan, to help, you know, all legal entities with this, as well as, is anything we can do with the healthcare district also to help. So, we'll definitely be behind you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to item, well, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to pass a consent agenda minus items 13, 15, and 16.
I so move.
It's been moved to second. Any public comment on items on the consent agenda besides the ones we just pulled to have to discuss? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number four, excuse me, item number five.
Item number five. Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to take each of these items up. Okay, item number 13. Proven adopt a resolution titled "Resolution of the Delmar County Board of Supervisors Authorizing the Use of the Stimson Special Revenue Fund in an Amount Not to Exceed $500,000 for Internal Financing," as requested by the proactive goal committee.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Sullivan. I didn't pull this item because I'm opposed to it. I'm absolutely not opposed to it. I'm deeply in favor of it. But I just want the public to know that this fund is a perpetual fund, and we need to keep it intact, and through this resolution, it does that, keeps it intact, and not only that, intact, but also augments it. So, we are going to financially benefit from doing these items. It's a win-win-win situation, which are certainly situations that I like to be involved with, but it's important enough to know that this, these are not just funds that we can go out and expand without having some way of replacing them. And so, I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware that this is not done without serious issue and serious thought. So, that was the only reason that I pulled it. I wanted to make sure that the public did know how much effort has been put into doing these types of things.
If that was a motion to support, I would second.
It's been moved to second. Any public comment on item 13? Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. Any additional comments? Supervisor McClure?
So, what kind of MOU or guarantee each department is going to have to sign off on this capital expense, that they're going to have the finances, that they're not going to be able to come back in a year and say, you know, "We agreed to have that, but we still have a shortage, and we would like to postpone those payments," or, how are, what's our safeguard there?
Us. We approve the budget.
So, we will be able to?
Yeah, the commitment in there is, you know, ultimately, the Board of Supervisors adopts the budget, and so the commitment is inside of this resolution that says that that is not an option, that not paying off this investment, because that's essentially what it is, an investment. It's not an option. It will be an obligation of the board to fund that on an annual basis, so it'll be the highest of priorities.
I just want it to be in some kind of bold print on the agreement between the departments, so it's not one of those aha moments of, "Oh, I didn't realize that that was what I was signing," because I think we have some electeds that we don't have a lot of bite back on. If we, I mean, we control the budget, yes, but we need to make sure that those electeds, when they're taking this money for capital expenditures, realize that this is a priority to pay back.
I would agree, and I sit on the proactive financial committee, and just so, for the public's knowledge of what we're doing is, in the past, when we've had large expenditures to, for example, the phone systems, one right now that's being replaced within the county, we've had to go borrow money from an outside finance organization. And what we've come to a conclusion is, especially because the fixed interest rates right now are so low on that Stimson Fund, we figure we can, you know, the county can save money in terms of financing the item internally, in-house, versus us paying to an outside organization. So, it will generate more money for the Stimson Fund and build that up, but additionally, we're saving the money on the county side. So, it is a win-win, as Supervisor Hemmingsen had mentioned.
Oh, I agree that it's a win-win. I just want that full print, that there's no excuse here, that you're not paying this back.
Yeah, that's duly noted, and was discussed at length through the proactive financial management committee, and certainly is, it's a key to making this work.
Excellent. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, item 15, I have a conflict of interest, so Supervisor Hemmingsen will lead this discussion.
Okay, thank you. This is a, approve or authorize the chair to sign the residential lease agreement with Creston City Properties LLC. Gary?
Yes, I guess there were some questions.
I pulled the item, Supervisor Hemmingsen, and I pulled the item because, again, I'm a kind of a conduit. I'm asking questions, but people are asking me questions. Constituents are asking me questions. So, that is my addressing to you, Mr. Blatnick, because I think it's important that the public, there's full disclosure here, is aware of what possibly may be a potential quandary in this particular neighborhood of 485 K Street, which incidentally, is a very lovely house. It sits adjacent, is directly north of the mental health branch. It's my understanding this is temporary housing will be provided for up to three adults at one time, clients of the mental health branch. I'm clearly understanding that in, according to the Blue Binder, a vast portion of the monthly rent of $1,150 per month will be paid back to the agency, to your agency, by the occupants, who indeed have mental challenges until permanent housing is secured for these clients. Now, I just would like to know, and then the public would like to know, is my interpretation of this agreement correct, Mr. Blatnick?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then my next question has to do with, what about the challenges of these mentally challenged people? You know, I read this morning in the triplicate, there's someone who's stabbing an ATM at the Chase Bank. Someone who lives in that direct neighborhood contacted me, was concerned that people are sleeping on her stoop. She didn't identify the people, but I presume they have mental challenges, they're sleeping on her front porch. There is no monitor there at the property. There is no one there. Is that correct, Mr. Blatnick?
There's no live-in monitor there. Each person, the, this is really part of a continuum of care, and efforts are to actually prevent what you were describing about people living under porches, or the mentally ill going without services, and perhaps leading to some disaster, as you identified. Really, what we're trying to do here is connect the individual with services. So, each one of these individuals has intensive case management services. They're an ongoing consumer from the mental health branch. So, they're receiving virtually day-to-day services, including Saturdays and Sundays when necessary. So, we are able to actually have a very close working relationship. That's sort of part of the arrangement that we make. We're willing to work with you and provide you with some temporary shelter, so you can stay out of, in part, trouble, and get the kind of help that you need, and, but the idea is that you're willing to work with us and engage in this very intensive case management activity.
Now, I'm curious to know, have any of the neighbors in this immediate area have been advised of, this is what, this is going to be, who's going to be living here now?
Not that I know of, and there's no requirement to do such.
Yeah, and it disturbs me a little bit that we all live in our neighborhoods, and something happened next door to my home. I'd want to know what was going on. I just felt it was a courtesy thing to let folks know. I know you're legally able to do this, but, you know, sometimes, in what is not disclosed is more problematic than what is disclosed.
Now, I should reassure you that these are people that would be residing in Delmar County regardless. So, these are our neighbors, our community residents, people that live in our community regardless. We're just providing an opportunity for them to have some stable housing. We know stable housing is something that assists people from going into crisis. When you don't have stable housing, people are homeless, they're living from couch to couch. That produces a great deal more instability and stress, which can lead to more serious mental health issues. So, this is really a prevention measure, actually.
I would concur with you, Mr. Blatnick, on that, absolutely. Now, are the tenants that are there gender mixed, male, female?
Could be.
So, again, thinking outside, is there a protection for, if there's two males and one female there? I mean, it raises concern to me, what happens just by somebody being there, and there's two males and there's one female there?
These are adults, and that can occur, and again, if there are any issues or difficulties that any of the residents are experiencing, they'll let us know immediately, and we can address those.
And what kind of average stay are we talking about here? A week, two weeks?
No more than a month. So, no, it would be sort of, a longer period of time would be about a month.
Well, I just would caution your department to be very vigilant about who's living there and the type of monitoring that is there. I would not want to see an unfortunate incident take place with either someone who lives in the neighborhood, or someone who is an occupant of that house subjected to some kind of a crime because it wasn't properly monitored. So, having said that, you have my vote.
Thank you. We're on the same page. Did you want to address 16?
I would just like to make a couple of comments.
Sure.
That in relationship to adults and community members with disabilities.
Yes.
There's a specific civil rights protection of their anonymity, their being able to be treated as a regular citizen in the United States, and also in relationship to HIPAA rules in releasing information to neighbors and that kind of thing. I understand the discussion. In fact, I have, I have a rental that's close to another facility, and there's never been an issue, but at the same time, the protection of that individual's civil rights are imperative, and their privacy between their illness, be it be a mental illness or a physical disability, is between them and their mental health provider, or them and their physician. So, to ask a question that starts to infringe on their human rights, one needs to question the legality of a body like this, that we need to make sure that civil rights are protected, and the person with the disability is protected with HIPAA rules and the right of privacy that other citizens enjoy.
Exactly.
Chair Hemmings, may I respond? I'm on board with Supervisor McClure, but I'm always, 100% of the time, going to be siding on the side of public safety. I respect civil rights, and by the way, we all have them. 100% of us have civil rights. No one wants to take anybody's civil rights away. But I'm also concerned about public safety. I don't want to see anyone put in the situation unintended consequences for what we do this morning in this chamber, where someone is put in danger, and I'm going to underscore that, Mr. Blatnick, because I hope, whatever monitoring you do, that you remember my comments to you, that public safety is my top concern on that matter. Thank you.
Any other comments, David?
I'm going to try not to get too deep into this. What we're asked to do is approve a residential lease agreement, and that's what it is. We're not here to micromanage a program. The policy of this board has been supportive, and to be very aggressive in going out and finding new ways, new protocol to treat people in crisis. We have wraparound services, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I, as a board member, am never going to get into micromanaging my next-door neighbor, but if you're concerned, then go down to the Megan's Log, the thing at the sheriff's department. To try to bring it back without editorializing, it's a lease agreement, plain and simple. I'm supportive.
Okay. Thank you.
Also move, if you're ready, Mr. Blatnick.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Okay, so you have no public comment? Board members, are we done? Tony, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Okay, we are gonna, well, you're up here. Going to item 16, which was also pulled. Approve and authorize the chair to sign the agreement with BHC Heritage Oaks Hospital in Sacramento, California, for psychiatric inpatient hospital services from July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2013, not to exceed $60,000, as requested by Director of Health and Human Services.
And questions about that?
Indeed. I brought the, I pulled the matter up, and again, for public clarification and information, as an elected member, a guardian of the trust, public trust, I'm disturbed that Delmar County is not actively looking, or if you are, please let us know that, Mr. Blatnick, for options to what appears to be a very expensive way to treat folks who have psychiatric needs. Sending them down to Sacramento, and I'm going to presume this is by ground ambulance?
Correct.
That's, I've done that, I don't think I'm mentally ill, and I've done that drive in seven hours, and I'm challenged to do that at the end of the day. I can't imagine being strapped into a gurney for seven hours to be in there for a week. So, my question to you, Mr. Blatnick, is what are our options, if any? I hear Dr. Caldwell and Dr. Duncan here talking about our hospital, St. Joseph's Hospital. Are there no services available on psychiatric basis in either Humboldt or Delmar County? Should we be, I'm asking a lot of questions, because I'd like you to address this. Should we be looking at options? I'd bring, fly someone up here one day a week. Is that doable?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the middle of the discussion there, it points out that it is not the primary?
Yeah.
It is rather the emergency backup plan?
Right. Yeah, the, this is a facility that we use as a backup to our primary facility. The point about using out-of-town psychiatric hospitals is true, and we're always examining and looking for the closest available hospital. The one that we do use that's the closest is in Yuba City, and we would love to be able to use the Humboldt County facility on a regular basis, it's not made available to us. So we have to go where there are available beds. There are very few hospitals left in the state, and that's the closest to Del Norte County.
Well, and I might, I might add, Director Blatnick, that I know we've, you know, talked to you several times, I know you guys have been diligent about bringing the cost down over the last few years, and they have, just for the public's information, they've been very active about bringing, trying to bring those costs down, but we are limited.
And have brought the cost down.
We've done very well, in fact, the program that we just talked about a minute ago, creating that residence, that opportunity to prevent a crisis by having a place for people to live for a while, that's exactly the kind of thing, the creative work that we're doing, so we don't have to use the hospitals as frequently. So we have been able to reduce through a variety of our strategies and services, the use of hospitalization has gone way down. We would still like to have it go down further, but only if we have the right supports in our community, so we can provide real alternatives.
Duly noted. I appreciate your efforts on this. Just to confirm, there are ten patients in this program right now?
This would be a maximum available, if we needed that, up to about ten people would utilize this facility. On the average, there are probably about two people a week that are hospitalized for one reason or another in various facilities, mostly in Yuba City.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved, second. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes, and we're going to take a three-minute recess here.
Motion to accept the budget transfers.
So motion.
Okay, are you doing item zero one, zero two, zero one, zero three, zero one, zero four, zero one, zero five, zero one, zero six, and zero one, zero seven? As a single motion?
I'll second that.
It's been moved to second. Any public comment on budget transfers? Okay, seeing no bud- any, any public comment, I'll close that. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Getlin?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, so that was items nineteen through twenty-four in the agenda. Okay, moving on to... We're gonna go to item twenty-seven. Approve the 2013 Board of Supervisors' Appointment List of Committees. Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any public comment on, on the appointment list? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Getlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item twenty-eight. Direct staff to research the process for putting forth an assertion for public rights of way over the federally managed lands in Delano County and to conduct public outreach and coordination with the Forest Service on recognizing these rights or ways as requested by community development departments.
Can you capitalize that? In bold, lettering, underlined?
Do we have...
Randy?
Well, I can certainly try to encapsulate this in a nutshell for you. It's a supremely complicated issue, as I came to find out through my research of it. Very ironic considering it's a one-sentence-long law, as you saw in your staff report. The, uh, basically, you know, this kind of ties in with the no-nat-loss policy that the board has. Uh, upwards of eighty percent of the lands in Delano County are public, or at least under public management. Seventy percent of that, approximately seventy percent, is under federal. RS-2477 is a really old law, goes back to eighteen sixty-six, revised statute twenty-four seventy-seven. And it basically was, I think most people agree, a self-enacting law that grant- automatically granted rights of way whenever federal lands came into a jurisdiction like Delano County. It's been implemented broadly across the western United States in the form of resolutions from county boards and supervisors for the past fifteen or twenty years. In nineteen seventy-six, it was repealed under FLPMA, Federal Lands Policy Management Act or some acronym of that derivative. The, the interesting thing about that law being repealed is that it didn't repeal existing rights of way, and because it was self-enacting, any rights of way that in fact existed whenever those federal lands came into being basically were granted at that point and grandfathered in. But from that point forward, any additional rights of way that were put in post nineteen seventy-six could not be granted, at least that's how it's typically been interpreted. So, the, the purpose of this, again, ties into the, into the no-nat-loss philosophy. The no-nat-loss obviously has to do with ownership of land and taxation and use of that land. This is kind of a tangent to that, and it has to do specifically with access. This is about preserving access. Staff has been approached by a group of, I guess, access advocates in the, in the public, and they've asked us to look at the, the, uh, the process by which the county could go about recognizing these rights of way. RS-2477 has been, um, basically kind of latched onto as the idea of being the most appropriate way to preserve those, those access points that would otherwise, you know, they may have been closed already, or they could come under the threat of, of closure. So this is a way for the board to, through, through a resolution, to acknowledge that these right-of-ways do exist. If, uh, the board wanted to take it any further through, you know, court claims or whatever, that's something that other jurisdictions have gotten into. I've had a lot of dialogue with, with other counties that are in kind of similar position as us. Really, it's an uphill battle to go any further than a resolution. But what the purpose of this item on your agenda today is, is basically just to raise the issue and to start a dialogue with the public. You know, it may be something that, you know, we get into and we find out that it's just, you know, overly complicated, too legally expensive to pursue, whatever the case may be, but again, this is an opportunity to figure out, you know, what the, the best possibility is for preserving access within the federally managed lands of Delano County. This has been, this has been an option that's been, uh, latched on to other places. Again, very complex issue. It's been, you know, in some courts, it's gone one way, in other courts, it's gone another. But, you know, again, for the purposes of the item today, we're just looking at probably a, a resolution. You know, if we wanted to take it any further, that would be your prerogative, but this would be an opportunity to talk to the advocates for access, as well as the people who may not be supportive of the idea for environmental reasons or whatever. We did get a letter, uh, this morning to that extent from Eileen Cooper, Friends of Delano. I don't know if you've gotten a copy of it yet. It just came in like before the meeting, so you probably didn't, but it has to do with, um, concerns over access and what may come along with access in the form of, uh, you know, poor orford cedar root rot spreading. There is also a point raised about dedicating staff time to this type of endeavor, whether or not that's a, an appropriate use of staff time. You know, I would address those comments by just saying that this is the initial step in the process. We, we may find out that we're just spinning our wheels once we get into it, but that's not something we'll know until we actually get the support of the board to pursue the issue and to investigate the issue. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions from supervisors? Supervisor McClure?
Yes, is there a national organization that's part of this effort?
RS-24, yeah, RS-2477 is promoted by a number of different content, wings of people with, uh, concerns.
Who are they?
Honestly, there's, there's too many to count. It's, there's a lot of people for it, there's a lot of people against it.
Well, just give me a couple of names of organizations that are behind this.
I, I don't think I have that prepared for you today.
I got clients that are, would love for you to look at that have mineral rights that the Forest Service has come in and tank-trapped, and they can't even get to their property.
Yeah, I can certainly prepare that and get it, and get it for you. Again, there's a, there's a myriad of concerns on, on all aspects of the issue that I can get for you.
I get that, and I get that it's to start the dialogue, and I have no, I'm in support of starting the dialogue. I do want, though, that to make sure that our dialogue also talks about when we say that in the eighteen sixty-six law, that it was established to do the, um, right-of-way for construction of highways over public lands, not to be reserved for public purpose as hereby granted. I, I, I know, I see what that rule says, and I don't know what the definition in the, in the federal transportation rules of what a highway is, and I think that that needs to be something that we do our research on. I also, when I read that and read then the, um, the, when it was repealed in seventy-six, it appears that those right-of-ways had to have been formally adopted. That the ones that are grandfathered in are right-of-ways that were formally adopted by either state, local jurisdiction. And I'm not sure we ever did that formal adoption. So I would like to see the, the deeds, I guess, or the, the right-of-way declarations. And then also, it doesn't, it's not very clear that if one takes on the responsibility of a right-of-way, where is the responsibility of managing and maintaining that right-of-way? Does that then fall to the county? So those kinds of discussions have to be part of taking a look at this, because if all of a sudden the right-of-ways became our responsibility to maintain, that could be an extremely costly effort. Not sure it's gonna come out that way. I mean, I'm, I'm more than willing to say, let's look at where RS-2477 actually exists in our county in relationship to our backcountry roads. I have no, no problem doing that, recognizing that many of those backcountry roads in eighteen sixty-six were privately held and weren't public lands at that point, because the public land transfer may have happened, and when that public land transfer happened, did right-of-ways go with it, or, you know? I don't know all those, all those details. And I do believe that, I mean, we can do it, I, I agree with you that to take it here is our beginning state, but we really have to evaluate how much money we can expend on this kind of activity, on this kind of uphill battle, when I know that I have road surfaces in my community that need to be addressed. So that's my concern.
Yeah, those, those are all excellent points, and they're definitely things that, you know, I've mulled over in my research of, of the issue. You know, the practical implementation of it, I think, the success of it depends on how willing of a partner you have in the, in the federal side. And as part of this, we're, we're hoping to coordinate with the Forest Service, find out what the concerns are that they're gonna have, how compliant they're gonna be with this resolution, if it's gonna present, you know, significant hurdles in the future that could exhaust staff time and, and cost down the road in, in terms of defending the resolution. Definitely points that we've, you know, taken into consideration. Again, just to reemphasize, you know, this is just to kick things off, and, uh, we'll hopefully be able to digest on some of those issues through the process in more detail and present that at a future board meeting whenever we have the issues more ironed out. This is just for direction.
Any other supervisors' comments?
Yeah, I, I just wanna make a compliment. Thank you, Randy, for, for taking this up. I know Mike Tolson and Jim Pohr and the Mitchells, you know, have always been supportive of this stuff. They've done a lot of work on it and brought that to you. And I look forward to, to moving this forward. It is an access, access issue that, that I don't think there is any requirement that we maintain these accesses with this new travel management plan coming in, uh, into effect. At some point, it, it's not gonna be so much the authorized routes as getting on to unauthorized routes, and I don't wanna see anybody in this community get a ticket for being on an unauthorized route that's there and available. So that's, uh, and I appreciate your efforts, and I look forward to, to pushing this thing forward. Thanks.
Any other supervisors? Supervisor Getlin?
Yes, Chair Sullivan, thank you. Randy, I think you just answered my question, and I wanna, I wanted to get a clarification on this clearly. What do you think the practical effects of this resolution will be, once we pass this or turn it down? Where, I know you're, I'm asking you to anticipate someone else's response, but you're closer to it than I am. What do you think will be the response?
Well, it's really hard to say exactly how, you know, the whole process would play out. Ideally, you know, we would be able to, to provide and preserve access without having additional maintenance costs that would be taken on and borne by the county. These are all perfect world scenarios that we hope would play out, but you just never know. In talking to our neighbor, that, our most immediate neighbor on this issue, Siskiyou County, they've been on this issue for a number of years, and they've passed resolutions, but they've never taken them further than a, just a resolution. So if somebody were to be out there, you know, driving around in, in a road system that the federal government might tell you shouldn't be on, they can at least say, well, the Board of Supervisors disagrees with you. That's, that's what happens whenever you see somebody out there on a road. But as far as broader policy things for the county implications, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, and it's gonna be really hard to, to say how exactly it would be implemented.
Have you been up there for a look-see?
Well, this is a, this would cover a number of different access points, and I grew up here, and my dad did take me up in the woods quite a bit as a kid to chop and stack more wood than I ever would have liked to have, but nonetheless, that's what my childhood consisted of largely. So I've seen a lot of the places, yes, but...
Recently, I mean, the condition?
Well, my son's only two. Or only three, so not yet.
He's not chopping wood.
I'm not right there yet. Give it a couple of years.
And to that point, I understand, these, these are roads, um, some of them, um, you know, that are in excess of a hundred years old and are still there. And there hasn't never, there has never, to my knowledge, been maintenance by the Forest Service, the county, or any other, other than the users, uh, to these roads. So that should indicate that the, the roads are in, in pretty stable areas.
Good. Well, I'm glad we got somebody in-house now, so I appreciate you looking into this, Randy. I mean, that's, hopefully what we will get out of this is some answers, and I think that's what the board's been, uh, for a long time, is it's been a frustrating position. We want public access to, uh, to, to the land, and the question is how to do it. So hopefully this process will, will answer those questions, so. Court, in the minutes that you're gonna direct? Yeah, I'm gonna give direction unless there's any disagreement on the board. We'll give direction to staff to pursue this then.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Oh, any public comment on this? Yes?
Yes, uh, my name is Mike Tolson, resident of Crescent City. And to answer Supervisor McClure, the Red Blue Ribbon Coalition is one of the, uh, people that are working, yeah, on this. And I just wanted to say that, uh, I got involved with this, uh, through the North Coast Cliffhangers several, uh, years back, and, uh, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. One, basically, we're not asking to improve the roads that are out there, we're just asking to leave them open. And over the years, like Jerry Hemmingson, Supervisor Hemmingson had said, uh, these roads, some of them been out there for a hundred and fifty years, and, or close to a hundred and fifty years. And a lot of the mines and a lot of the things that are out there right now that these roads lead to or trails lead to and from have been there all that while also. And we're just asking to, just leave it as it is. There's no need to close, why close the roads? What's the reason for closing them? And it's, if they leave it as it is, it's not gonna cost the county anything other than what it is now, just maintain the county roads. And we, we're out there all the time, and it's not like you see on TV with the Baja One Thousand where everybody's going eighty miles an hour. Once we get off the county, once we get off the county roads, it's probably under twenty miles an hour. We're crawling around and just enjoying the, enjoying the scenery and that sort of thing. And I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that, uh, it's, of course, the National Forest was, uh, put in place out here in nineteen oh seven, and it's our understanding, although we haven't been able to get any of the records, because, uh, as most of you know, in nineteen forty-seven, the courthouse burned down and all the records were, uh, consumed in that. But, uh, it's our understanding that during that time, when it became the National Forest, it was a, uh, part of the deal was that the roads that were considered historical up to that time could not be altered or could not be closed, could not be changed in any other way other than possibly maintaining the, the trails and the roads. Now, we haven't been able to confirm that because we haven't, we can't find that document. I think Jerry has asked the Forest Service for it several times, and they say they don't have it, which is hard to believe. But anyway, when it was put, basically, when it was put to, uh, became six, uh, I'm sorry, Smith River Recreation Area back in nineteen ninety, yeah, it took four hundred and fifty square miles out of the Six River National Forest, and this is the area that we're talking about right now. And it was advertised, because it's a recreation area, it was advertised as, get off the beaten path, I quote this, get off the beaten path in your family car, four-wheel drive, or mountain bike, and see more of the NRA National Recreation Committee using, using a hundred and twenty-four miles of county road and a hundred and forty-two miles of National Forest Road. These roads reveal forest, wildlife, streams, and lakes not seen from the main road. So it was actually advertised, it's a recreation area, and to recreate, you have to have access. And they're trying to close these accesses. And then, this is a quote out of the Blue Ribbon Magazine, and it's according, according to the local contact, Lee Riddle, this is back in two thousand eight. According to the local contact, Lee Riddle, the Gasky Ranger District Six River National Forest recently finished their road plan after three years. As a result, the United States Forest Service closed two hundred and fifty miles of the five hundred miles of roads and trails. Many trails designed on the National Forest map open to OHV will be closed under the new ruling, resulting in some long loop, in some of the long loops, becoming the best short or dead end. Some of the historic wagon trails were also closed. The United States Forest Service reasoning for most of this closure were due to alleged botanical and aquatic risk. However, these rare plants are still thriving after years on the roads, and they don't appear to be significantly infected or at any risk in future damage from the OHVs. Due to the terrain vehicles, due to the terrain, vehicles stay on the roads. Under the road plan, all roads under, closed unless signed open. And that was their thing, they wanted to close these roads and, uh, put up signs seeing which ones were open. This also has a, uh, a, uh, financial situation here. As you know, we've lost our, uh, revenue from the forest, or from the, uh, logging, the mining, and that sort of thing. And we are a, uh, we are a, uh, tourist town, and a lot of, a lot of the folks from the Bay Area come up here in the summertime and spend good bucks, and they bring their four-wheel drives, they bring their, uh, uh, four-wheel, uh, vehicles to go up into that area and to look around and everything. It's beautiful up there. I don't know if you've ever been up in there, but it's, it's a beautiful place to, to recreate. And if they get up here now and they find out some of these roads are closed, or they get on a road that was, uh, they were used to using over the years, and, uh, they find that it was closed, they can be ticketed and get a pretty substantial fine. And so you're gonna find, if, if these roads close and that sort of thing, you're gonna find that, uh, a lot of these vacationers that come up here and spend money on food, on gas, and Jeep parts, and, and things like that, will not be coming to this area. And so it has a revenue effect also, so...
Mike, not meaning to cut you off, could you wrap up a little bit?
Okay, yeah, that's about it. And, um, I'm asking that, uh, the supervisors approve this RS-2477, and so we can take a further look at it and, uh, maybe help out the community with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any other public comments? Okay, seeing no other public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment, and it has, the direction has been given to staff to pursue this, so.
Great.
Moving on to item twenty-nine. Discuss county participation in Delano Solid Waste Authority and whether to remain a ten-member board or revert back to a five-member board as requested by myself. Um, I put this on the agenda because we kind of, that ten-member board just kind of, in fact, we didn't have a couple of meetings to end the year last year, so I think I wanted to bring this up for discussion among the board as to what direction to go. Supervisor Hemmingson?
I'll, I'll waddle through this the best I can. You know, we spent a year as a ten-member board and just floundered back and forth chasing our own tail. It was apparent to me, the longer that I was on that board, that what, uh, I don't know exactly how to say what needs to happen or how it's to happen, but what needs to, what we need to have to make our, uh, make that program work as, as a strong fiscal manager. Everything that was brought, I, I can't think of one instance in the back of my mind, but I can't think of, of much of anything that was brought to my, that was brought to that board that was not something to do with a fiscal problem, uh, that had to do with money. It wasn't about, uh, reporting, uh, to the state agencies, it wasn't about, uh, water quality or air quality or any of that kind of stuff. It was all fiscal, so it was all about money management and office management. So I think that is a part that's missing. Also, um, there was, um, a lot of issues over ordinances. I personally believe that ordinances and enforcement, for that matter, belong with the cities and the counties, that, uh, garbage collection has nothing to do, or should have nothing to do with ordinances, in my opinion, that cover the area of both the city and the county and may conflict with their ordinances in particular. I, I don't have a recommendation of a ten-member board or a five-member board. Personally, I, I think that we need to have some sort of direction to go and, and see if we can't come up with a resolution between the city and the county to, to find a way to manage our garbage, uh, together in a different way, whether it's with an MOU. But this, this government bureaucracy that has, that has built itself up to being able to pass ordinances and to, uh, do enforcement and, uh, product stewardship and advocacy for zero waste and all this other stuff, I think is beyond the need of this county to deal with their garbage.
Okay, any, any other supervisor? Supervisor Getlin?
Well, Supervisor Hemmingson, I concur. You said it about as clearly as I can say it. Ten-member board is unwieldy, I'm not sure about a five-member board. It kind of reminds me when my father taught me how to ride a bike, he had training wheels on it. I learned how to ride the bike, and then he let me ride my bike. So I think it's time for Delano County to ride its own bike. So, thank you Supervisor Hemmingson, I concur.
Any other supervisors? Supervisor Finnegan?
I don't know about bike riding, but I, uh, I successfully avoided the Solid Waste JPA for darn near fourteen years. Might have been fifteen years. And this last year, when I was forced into service, I took a good look at what's there, and I usually, you know, like to see joint powers authorities when they are a combination of governments that can accomplish a task that those governments cannot accomplish themselves. And what I saw, um, was, uh, did not justify why that JPA was there. I think that one government, I, I know historically why it was formed, and that's because we had a city attorney who then was a county council eventually, who's not with us anymore, tried to limit the liability of the city and dump closure and, and whatever else, when it really didn't do that, but that was the guise that was put up. Bottom line is, is the government structure was put in place to manage the garbage, and it, and it, it doesn't need its own government structure. I'm not gonna sit on a ten-member board, period. I think that the city and the county, Jerry was an excellent idea, need to get together and figure out by an MOA, an MOU, some sort of memorandum between the city and the county, decide who's gonna be the lead government. Everything else is handled by contracts that are already in place. Code enforcement lies with the city and the county, enforcement of ordinances lies with the city and county. I'm sorry, I just don't see the justification to continue the, the JPA. I'd like to take a look at it. Is, uh, the city wants to run it? Contract with us? Great. If they don't, and they want us to? Great. Run it through one of our departments.
Supervisor McClure?
Well, needless to say, I am on the other side of this discussion, and that is partially because in the past number of years, the reason that we have a garbage system and a transfer station is because we have a JPA, and we have two contracts that are managed by that JPA. We have a, a JPA agreement that if one entity withdraws and the other does not, then the entity that stays within the JPA receives all the assets, which puts us at a very slippery slope in relationship to the transfer station and the bona fide, um, assessment of what that value is. It also leaves us solely responsible for the landfill, which at, yeah, 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 it does. I mean, we can go to court and try to establish with the city their responsibility, but it leaves it with us. And one of the most important parts, I believe, is that we have been able to set up a collection service where if you live in Gasky, or Fort Dick, or Smith River, you pay the same amount of pickup as if you lived on Third Street, or Fifth Street, or Pebble Beach. And that is extremely important, because when, when and if we dissolve the JPA, and let's say we gave it to the city, the city could then choose to have a staggered collection fee. And, um, I think that the people who are living in the outlying areas would be, um, hit inherently hard because their collection fees are more expensive. But the goal was to try to get people on the system to be collecting the trash, to start cleaning up our community, which it has done. And of the, one of the franchise benefits, in fact, are the, the ninety cans that you now see in the county and the city for garbage collection and recycling that are on our beaches, that are in our parks. That's all because of the franchise agreement. The reason that you see a place where you can take your batteries is because of a franchise agreement, because of the oversight of a JPA. The, um, ability to get rid of your recycled goods at the fairgrounds is because of a JPA. All of that has been the work of the JPA, and the work continues because the rules continue to change. We continue to have to have a plan, and the historic nature of garbage companies in California and in the nation has not been a very good track record. I mean, when you have, when you have had counties in California that have gone to one hundred percent privatization, they have now relinquished that and have gone back to an oversight, because what happens is that the garbage company then is in the driver's seat of all the cost, of all the service, and they get to pretty much do what they want. So I am, I'm in favor of keeping a five-person board. I agree that the ten-person board is too, too large, and if we do a five-person board, I definitely agree with Supervisor Hemmingson that there should be further discussion on the oversight of the, um, fiscal responsibilities and more insight into that, and can that be through a partnership with the county? I would, I would personally want the county auditor's office to be the lead in that kind of thing. But to keep the five-member board going, because there are nuances in California state government that require, for instance, the, the zero-waste plan, which is a requirement statewide, well, each entity has to have their own, which if... statewide, well, each entity has to have their own, which if we were all individual, then the city would have to have their own and the county would have to have their own, and we would have to spend staff time in making that kind of thing happen. So to me, the five-person board makes sense. Can it be less than a JPA? I don't know that answer, but I believe that we need to go forward, we need to make sure that we don't enter into agreements that could affect us financially in the future.
Okay, just very briefly, we agree that, I don't know whether it's a JPA or not, but I want to look at that. That's what I said. I didn't say anything about privatization. There's already contracts in place. I've said nothing to minimalize the effort that the JPA has done in the past with the collections, but I think that's already done.
And, and I also think that things that are, things that are thrown out, that this could happen, that that could happen, you know, I could, we could bring up 100 different scenarios, and I, but I think the, the effort and the, and the move needs to be to sit down with the city and, and see what we can agree on and, and see how we can work this out, whether it's continuing this or not. My understanding is they're bringing this up to their board. I don't know whether they're going to vote for a 10-member board or a five-member board. So we're, we're kind of in limbo on what, what they're wanting to do. But I think that, that we should have staff look into, and maybe, and maybe getting together with, with city staff and see what we, how this would work out in, in some way, shape, or form.
So really, what you're talking about is looking at alternative structure of what we have right now.
Exactly.
And I think the consensus of the board is that 10, 10-member board is just too big. It's, it was not.
I agree with that.
Very efficient at all. I don't think anyone would, would disagree with that comment.
Part of the time, I think, and this also is, the five-structure board had appointment of a member at large, and that was contested too, as part of the reason we.
Was it done away?
But then who's the fifth person?
No, the only part that was done away with is that they can't serve for four-member, they have to be approved by the city and the county. That's what was agreed.
And they can't do ordinances.
And they, they can't pass ordinances without the city and county ratifying those ordinances.
Chair Sullivan.
Yeah.
I, I think the argument against a five-member board is you're going to have this ping-pong going back and forth. Every 30 days, we approve, we deny, we deny, we approve, and it's going to be dysfunctional. So this is all coming down to money, and the, the Delnarre County is going to realize substantial savings when we move in this direction of removing a layer of government. And I think this is a benefit to the public, and it's a substantial benefit to the public. So I'm, again, concur with Supervisor Hemmingson and his, his statements.
So a couple of things. One is we have a two-by-two with the city coming up to set the agenda for the next city-county meeting. So we, we can put this on that, on that agenda to add it to the full-blown agenda. There are obviously some questions that come up, is, you know, the I-Bank loan that the county has, $3 million on that transfer site to build it, what happens to that if, if, for example, the county does pull out of, of the JPA? What would happen with the, the transfer site and the I-Bank loan? The, I, and all, just basically, I think the process needs to be worked out as, if this does happen, what, what does it look like later on, and then what are the repercussions? But I, I agree with Supervisor Finnegan, that the JPA has done some really good things and accomplished some things, but I, I think it may be past its time at this point. It was formed to, you know, close the landfill, build a transfer site, and 95% of what happens right now is privatized. So at this point, I would suggest that we add it to the agenda in the two-by-two with the city, to have a discussion at a full-blown city-county meeting, to see what direction we go from here. Yes, Supervisor McClure.
Then, if we're going to do that, because the, I don't know, what's the date for the two-by, for the city-county meeting?
I don't think that date's been set. The two-by-two is coming up here next week.
Right, with the date for the meeting.
The two-by-two date, it's going to set the date. It'll be.
Because I think that there are month-to-month operations that need to be approved either by the 10-member board or the five-member board in order to pay bills and in order to get the money for the I-Bank and do that kind of day-to-day operations, even if we just went back, either A, a 10-person board for the next three months or whatever, or a five-person board. But I think that the, the parameters of, of the operation need to be able to pay their bills, they need to be able to pay Ambrose, they need to be able to pay Recology, that kind of business needs to be taken care of.
I would agree the day-to-day operations would be your bigger concern in the, in the near future. The I-Bank transfer happens automatically.
And just for clarification, at this point, the 10-member board is dissolved as of the 31st, so you are currently operating under a five-member board. So it, in order for the solid waste joint powers authority to continue to operate, there will need to be some sort of appointment of two members from this board to that one, at least in the meantime.
Would it actually be a four-member board, since there's no other person, the city and I?
It'll ultimately be a five-member board, yeah.
But doesn't that process of getting that other person have to go out to for a 30-day process?
Yes, yes.
And then come back and then be approved by their board and our board and ping-pong?
I just don't, I just don't believe that you have time to not address the day-to-day operations and the, and the payments that are necessary in the approval of the, of that kind of activity, that you don't have time to let it just languish and not have a meeting and a board.
Well, I agree, can't, can't the respective boards in the interim approve, just like we would in ordinance? So just make sure that, just, just in a timely manner, bring forth the bills?
I don't.
I don't know.
I haven't looked at the JPA recently, but I can't remember anything that would authorize that under the JPA, so I'd have to double-check.
So as of right now, I've got as the, the two-by-two, adding that to the agenda, add it to full city-county, again, for discussion about it.
Well, I might suggest that you appoint two people to authorize the payment of bills that can get together, two people in the city in the interim. Four, four is a quorum. Right?
I agree. Okay. So would we?
You fiscal managers, you?
Point of clarification, then, are we, what's?
I think David volunteered to be one of the.
No, I thought Mike and Jerry would be great. They're both fiscally inclined and very astute.
I think at this point, I would, we, I would say we just do a temporary appointment, then if, if we're going to do it, with the idea that it would expire in.
Ninety days.
In, in nine, in what, 90 days?
Oh, 90 days is, whatever, you're the boss.
60 days. So I, I would appoint myself and Supervisor Hemmingson at this point, and, and we'll.
I just want to say that I'm going to reject that because I believe it violates our own personnel policies. When they're in our personnel policies, we identified that if you are on a committee that unless the supervisor chooses not to, then the plan is that they stay on that committee. I don't know if you remember that in our policies manual that we just adopted about three months ago.
County Council Stuart, is there any legal basis not to appoint, I'm sorry, go ahead?
But wasn't our appointees were all five members? So any of those five members, right, could be appointed?
Well, I would have to go, I would go back to the original board, because I would ask that my interest.
Well, but the last board was all five.
I guess what I'm saying is that I would ask that my interest be represented on that board also, considering it's obvious that the, the interest between the two potential appointees is identical.
But it's only to pay bills. That's all, that's all.
We're not making policy decisions.
We're just telling you. Trying to meet with the city to discuss further policy.
That's fine, just pull about that.
Okay, I will put it out for a 60-day appointment to, yes.
Then I have another question. I guess this would be to legal staff, does the name of the appointees for the committee assignment need to be made public prior to the appointment? Gretchen?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to open the.
Does the need for.
The appointees need to be public.
The appointees' name to be public prior to the appointment, like the list that we approved today that was made public?
Great, we can wait two weeks, put it on the agenda.
There is a need for that to be public, yes.
Okay, well, put it on the next agenda then.
So like if we had disagreed with one of the appointments that was put forward today under the previous item, that we couldn't have changed it? I don't think so. But that's okay. We can, if, if you think that the bills don't need to be paid for another couple of weeks, I'm more than happy to wait.
I think the potential list of people still needs to be available for public comment.
Okay.
The potential list, and I'm, I'm going to back, this is why I never even wanted anything to do with this, is, the potential list was of the five that were already there, it was to extend those five or not, or a portion of them, and we're deciding to extend a portion some other day.
I understand that, but it's not documented in the agenda that way.
Okay, so we will add it to the next agenda, and.
You'll add all five members to the, to pick two out of the five?
Yeah.
And as a point of clarification, we will review the admin manual regarding the appointment list also and have a, have an opinion.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go on to item 30. Consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delnarre authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments. Okay?
As indicated considerably earlier in the meeting by Supervisor Finnegan, it is very new into the new legislative process. It will be interesting to see what comes forward. Right now, we don't have any letters before the board for advocacy otherwise, but I do, I'm curious to see what legislation will pop up here in, in the near future and what might be brought forward and, and how that's debated. Right now, no letters before you, and we'll be monitoring that.
Two things you might look out from administration point of view is, there's two options before the state right now for implementation of the Affordable Care Act. One is a county option and one is the state option. And whether there will be a hybrid or not, the governor's office is probably not going in that direction. So when CSAC calls and discusses, some counties will experience a windfall, most won't, but it's all one or the other. You might, you know, pay attention on that one. And realignment, any discussion, stay tuned on that. And then also, there is money that has been set aside, it's not counting as the baseline, what we're talking about, the implementation of 109, which affects law enforcement. There's money out there, and he needs to be in touch with picking up pieces of that out of Sacramento.
In regards to that in particular, I've been in touch with our advocates and others almost weekly, attempting to get as much information on that as possible. The word that I have is there's about $80 million out there that will be allocated in some form or fashion.
Well, and there's also some left from the first pot.
Right, and AB 109, that, that allocation coming up will be pretty much dealt with through probation, but we'll keep an eye on it also, yes.
Okay, seeing no other items, we'll go on to item 31. We're going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Public Improvement Corporation Board of Directors, acting, item 31 is acting as the Public Improvement Corporation Board of Directors, approve and adopt a resolution electing officers for 2013, and direct the clerk of the board to file the statement by a domestic nonprofit corporation with the Secretary of State as requested by the clerk of the board. JD, want to refresh your memory on this?
Annual action that needs to be taken in order to.
Moved, moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any public comments? Seeing no public comments, Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, we will adjourn at the meeting. Okay, thanks.